Good evening, everyone. The Tuscaloosa City Council will now come to order. We ask that everyone please stand for our council prayer. And then if you would remain standing for our pledge of allegiance, you'll bow your heads, please. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight. Give us the wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Please be seated. Approval of the minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second that we approve the minutes voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 I'm gonna go ahead and say Mr. Crowe voted in favor. He was with the paparazzi. So minutes stand approved. And as you can see, our council president is joining me tonight as we declare Dr. Ramesh Paramassetti Day. And I have to say, at the reception earlier to see the turnout, I mean, even my parents are here, guys. I don't think they've ever come for something for me, but they came for something for Dr. Paramassetti. So I'm just kidding, Mom and Dad. But they are, they are here tonight to recognize somebody that's made a lot of differences in our community. As I mentioned earlier at the, at the reception, certainly we all remember his dedication and the way that he shared information during COVID. That helped a lot of us, including myself, understand what we were dealing with, being in brand-new territory. And I will always appreciate his wise counsel. And anytime we needed, especially in our public safety sector, we needed some advice, some assistance, Dr. P. and his entire team was there for the city. So Dr. Paramassetti, I'm gonna ask if you would come forward, please, as I read this proclamation into the record. Whereas Dr. Ramesh Paramassetti has been a pivotal member of the Tuscaloosa community where he's lived and worked since 1998. His passion of helping others is shown by his involvement in the medical community. And whereas Dr. Paramassetti is founder and medical director of Alabama Federal, excuse me, Family Medical Care, Crimson Care, Skland, Crimson Care Veterans, Crimson Village, and Tuscaloosa Weight Law Center. And whereas Dr. Ramesh Paramassetti is a fellow of the American Academy of Family Physicians and a member of, a member of various societies, including the American Society of Bariatric Physicians, American College of, how do you pronounce this word?
Libbology.
Libbology? I will nod like I know what that means. I'll have to go home and Google it. Yes. Drawing blood. Look, Mr. Tyner. American Society of Laser Medicine and Surgery and American Academy of Aesthetic Medicine. And whereas, Dr. Paramassetti was an essential part of an effective response to COVID-19 pandemic in Tuscaloosa by providing medical aid and accurate information to the citizens of Tuscaloosa and its essential workers. Now therefore be it resolved that I, Walt Maddox, on behalf of a very grateful city council, do hereby proclaim March 28th to be Dr. Ramesh Paramassetti Day in Tuscaloosa and encourage all citizens to honor his dedication to the city of Tuscaloosa during the COVID-19 pandemic. Dr. Paramassetti, as we talked, will have a framed copy coming to your office, but this is a proclamation authorized by the council, and I want to say congratulations. It's your day.
And Mr. Tyner, if you would, and then Dr. P.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Mayor. I'll, I'll be very brief. This is a long time coming. And the thing that I know about my great friend is that we could fill pages and pages and pages of his contributions, not only to the medical field and taking care of being the COVID doctor and the one that everybody would turn to during that time of crisis for our city and our country, but he is one of the most giving people I've ever known. His list of philanthropies would, would be pages of things he's involved with and the causes that he gives to. Again, we could, we could do pages and pages of proclamation. But I felt like, and I talked with the mayor, the best thing to do to honor Dr. Paramassetti is to just make it Dr. Paramassetti Day and let that cover a huge umbrella. But my brother, I'm so proud of you and congratulations on 25 years. You've certainly taken an area in my district and have totally transformed what was very blighted at one time, and now it's an entire block of medical facilities. It's amazing what you've done. And so we congratulate you and look forward to 25 more years.
Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Walt Maddox, President of the Council, Mr. Keaton Tyner, Councilman, Councilwoman, and the community members, many family friends, and patients who are here to celebrate the honor with me. Thank you, the city of Tuscaloosa, for this recognition and for your support in helping me serve the community for 25 years, especially those who trusted me to provide the care they needed during the entire COVID pandemic. Special thanks to my peer providers, medical teams, and business associates who have supported me in this journey. Lastly, thank you to my family for the unconditional love and support. My family and I would like to express our sincere gratitude for all those who have crossed our path, trusted us, and supported us for the past 25 years. I look forward to continuing to serve this community that I love the most. Once again, thank you all from the bottom of my heart.
Thank you, Doc. Dr. Paramassetti, let me say to you, thank you for all of your tremendous work that you have done, that you continue to do. I, so long as so many others, have great stories about your personal care, your personal touch. Thank you for what you do for our community.
Dr. P., you look more relaxed and easygoing and cheerful in the office than standing up there about to get an award. You look like we do in, in your office when you're about to give us a shot. But I'm, I'm glad to see you loosen up and grin big. Thank you for all you've done for this community.
And as I mentioned at the reception earlier, we noted that you need to be, although I know that you're not, but reality also noted that if you do need to get a job, you're going to, again, thank you all. Unless. I hate, I hate this whole party. I'll have to, I'll send him, I'll send him.
You know. When I didn't, when I was a parent, my dad came and knocked on my door on the side and asked when I woke up. I had a lot of, I didn't know him from out. I think we can call the child. He's waving a sign. He's working hard. I think he'll come in. I appreciate it. It's great. But she was very nice to me, and that was freezing. Literally.
And as we transition tonight, I think it's really appropriate. We've talked about serving and helping our community and helping our fellow brothers and sisters in Tuscaloosa. We have another proclamation tonight that certainly speaks to helping those in need. And we have three people who have served our community so well, joining us to receive this proclamation. Ms. Chapman, Ms. Maddox, and Ms. Peacock, would you please come forward as I read this proclamation into the record?
Oh, yeah.
Whereas child abuse and neglect affects children of every age, race, and income level and can have a profound impact on a child's life. Whereas research shows that a history of child abuse or neglect is associated with adverse health and mental health outcomes in children and family, and those negative effects can last a lifetime. And whereas long-term child abuse or neglect has been linked to the increased risk of alcohol and substance abuse, likelihood of criminal behavior, health issues such as heart disease and obesity, learning disabilities, and domestic violence. And whereas preventing child abuse and neglect is a community problem that requires community involvement, effective child abuse prevention programs succeed when agencies, faith groups, businesses, and schools work together to ensure that every child can grow up in a secure and loving environment. Now therefore be resolved that I, Mayor Walt Maddox, on behalf of the city council, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2023 to be Child Abuse Prevention Month in Tuscaloosa and call upon citizens to become involved in the efforts to protect our children from abuse and neglect. To all of you who are gathered here tonight, I can't imagine being on the front lines of this. I can't imagine the strength that it takes with your heart and with your soul to protect our children and to be advocates. And we certainly are glad that there are people like you in our community that are standing in the gap and are guarding for our children. So please accept this proclamation on behalf of citizens with our sincere thanks. Thank you very much. I would give you a round of applause. I know my first cousin.
That's right.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Greetings from Child Abuse Prevention Services, along with five other agencies. We band together during the month and bring about awareness for the prevention of child abuse. We want everybody to know, this is just not a one-month thing. It happens 365.
That's right.
Every day, all day.
That's right.
But April is about bringing awareness. And we appreciate your support. We appreciate your support, and we thank you for this proclamation. And what the mayor says, the last line was, "We ask that everybody get involved and report. If you see something, say something." So we thank you.
And Ms. Maddox, if they do see something and they want to say something, where do you recommend they say something, or who should say something to?
We get a lot of calls, I'm sure TOPS and UCP also. They need to report it to DHR, or they can call the police department. So a lot of times, castles will need these calls, and we forward them to DHR. And I always would have thanked you for being an advocate, because a lot of people don't want to do, because they're afraid that somebody will find out that they report, reported. But we're always assured that's not the case. You can report, and nobody will know that you have done it. So they need to report to DHR or the police department.
If I may, I just want to say thank you. I worked, most of three years of my time at the police department was spent working child abuse cases. And then when I left there and went to the juvenile detention center, I saw many of those same children now as teenagers. And what you're saying is exactly right. And I really, from the bottom of my heart, appreciate what you're doing. I really do.
Thank you.
Ms. Maddox, and Banana, and all of y'all, I just want to say thank y'all. This is not the fun part of being a social worker or being in social services, but like you said, 365, we have to do this and be reminded that child abuse does exist. So thank all of y'all, and keep up the good work, and, and remember self-care.
Thank you.
Thank you.
God bless you. Thank you. Do we have any council announcements?
Yes, sir.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
I'm gonna be a hard act to follow. You go ahead.
All right. Listen, I want to invite the community out this coming Friday as we begin conversation on the repurposing of the Benjamin Barnes, while I'm sitting in this room at 1:30 PM. Our task force will meet at 1:30 PM this upcoming Friday. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So there's a lot going on in Tuscaloosa this weekend. The one that you do not want to miss is the Marines Gauntlet Obstacle Course Race Saturday morning out at Sokal Park.
You're right.
Iowa Pavilion.
You're right.
And since we value brevity, I'm gonna keep it to a minute and 12 seconds. Brandon?
You are hard act to follow. Wow.
It doesn't matter if you're a college student, a middle-ager, a housewife wanting to carry a rifle and run through the mud, we got something for you out there. It is the premier military-style obstacle course race.
It is. It is. That's right.
If you like swimming in ice.
That's right.
But there is an empty dumpster filled with ice and water that you will have to swim through at the end of it. You get your medal Saturday morning. The colors are raised, zero eight hundred, first wave lands at eight fifteen. If you, if you got a loose screw and you're in reasonably good physical condition, register tonight at tuscaloosagauntlet.com and run. If you've got all your marbles, bring the family out and watch Saturday morning. It's gonna be fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Busby.
Thank you. You are, you are a hard act to follow. Mine is less strenuous. I want to, this Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, we're having probably the largest Easter egg hunt in Tuscaloosa County. At J.C. Park, we've got over 3,500 eggs, and I believe 12 of them will have gold bicycles on the eggs, and that means you'll win a bicycle. So it's not just candy and the Easter bunny, but also have a chance to win a bicycle. And again, it's, the sponsors are, they've been amazing. So 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and at J.C. Park.
And I would like to make one more announcement, not as, as strenuous as Mr. Busby's or Kip's. You know, it's hard to find those Easter eggs sometime. But this Sunday at 2:00 PM at the Tuscaloosa River Market, we are the, the West Alabama Multicultural Alliance is hosting their sixth annual Heritage Festival, and we want to invite all of Tuscaloosa to come out and be a part of that. We are displaying artifacts from Linton's Barbershop, and we are also featuring sister cities. And so that is a free event to the public from 2:00 to 4:00 at the Tuscaloosa River Market. So I hope you all come out and enjoy.
Yep.
We got a lot going on in Tuscaloosa.
And I actually have a save ground. I left out the serious part. The Alabama Marines Foundation Para and Visit Tuscaloosa put this on together. The proceeds go to benefit veterans around Alabama. So in the last 10 years, this group has put out over $450,000, the Veterans Children Scholarship, VA clinics, and medical treatment, and now developing a youth leadership program.
Thank you, lady. We appreciate you. That's fantastic.
That's great.
Any other council announcements? Any agenda item comments by citizens?
Yes, sir.
Unfinished business, clerk?
This orders demolition of the structure at 4305 Stillman Boulevard.
Move it option.
Second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Williams.
Mayor, city council. This is for the condemnation of 4305 Stillman Boulevard condemned September 23rd, 2022. Property has 44 housing code violations. This property is in the area of the West End Revitalization Initiative authorized by Mayor Maddox. The owner's been notified and is aware of this hearing. He is also aware that if it's condemned by the city, and the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner is here to represent the property.
Any questions, Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Williams. If the owner or the owner's representative could come forward and please give your name and address.
Yes, my name is Willie Horton, owner of the property. And I think.
Would you, would you mind giving the address, please? Would you mind giving us an address, please?
45, 4305 Stillman Boulevard.
Okay.
Um, I saw the pictures, dear mayor, and it's things on it, the work that I've been doing, not, hadn't been seen. I am really tired. For my last night with no sleep, but in military, we were trained 72 hours with non-sleep. I changed my mind about not renting that said property. However, I have other properties that, that buildings I've been using for storage, material, sheet rock doors, windows. And I decided to just keep it as storage. It's an area which is very industrial on Stillman Boulevard with the Hunt's Oil and shingles and warehouses in that area. I, I came back to Alabama, I was born here. I lived in Los Angeles, 27 years of my life, and I wanted a piece of pie. In Alabama, I chose to, hey, this is a great place. My grandmother said it, it's a nice place to live. And since those days, I've seen the beauty of Tuscaloosa. And I would take what I have and beautify it for that community, which I know it can be done. And I just ask you for an extension of time.
Mr. Horton, thank you so much for being here tonight, and I'm grateful and thankful that I, I see that you're making progress. As you know, that we are trying our best to rid our communities, and especially District One. We want to rid District One of blight. We want to rid District One of unutilized buildings. We want to make sure that, that District One is a place where people want to live, where they want to raise their children, where they want to raise their grandchildren, where they feel that it is a place of hope. And let me say to you that I've spoken to the council today and, and talked to Mr. Virgil, and I'm going to ask the council to give you 30 days to make some more progress, and then that you come back. So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make a motion that we will give him an extension of 30 days, and then he will come back before us.
Second. Been moved in second to table for 30 days. This was a public hearing when it was introduced. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. God bless.
My grandfather would say, "Much obliged."
Thank you.
Consent agenda, clerk?
This approves items A through F on the consent agenda.
Move it up. Second. Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Consent agenda is adopted. Public hearings, clerk?
This adopts zoning amendment number 1507.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Pons.
Southeastern Investments Group LLC is petitioning to rezone approximately nine acres located south of 600 Harper Lee Drive from BGO to BH. This is council District Five. Here's the location of the property on Harper Lee Drive, just off McFarland Boulevard, close to Baumhauer's. Vacant currently. The applicant's requesting to rezone to BH to allow for a recreational facility and/or future hotel slash complimentary developments. It does conform to framework. Framework identifies this as campus services, which allows for commercial and mixed-use developments. As you can see on the future land use character map here, the purple is campus services. And then these are the permitted uses in the BH zoning district. And this was unanimously recommended for approval in February 2023 at Planning and Zoning Commission. Happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Any questions? Is the applicant here? You would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Jimmy Duncan with Duncan Coker Associates here in Tuscaloosa 302 Merchants Walk, Suite 250, Tuscaloosa 35406. Our firm's representing Southeastern Investment Group on this project. Zach pretty much covered everything. I'll attempt to answer any questions you have.
Any questions, Mr. Duncan? Thank you, Mr. Duncan.
Thank you.
If this is a public hearing, is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Zoning amendment is adopted. Good luck. Clerk?
This approves an off-premises-only retail beer license at the University Chevron in Tuscaloosa.
So moved. Second.
Moving second, Mr. Mills.
All right, good evening, Mayor and Council. This is ABC Alcohol Application 23-030 for a retail beer off-premise only by Alatas LLC for University Chevron located at 407 University Boulevard. This is the map of the location. A second picture shows the street view of the location. All my reports have been filed with the city clerk office. Officer Champion, give your report. Followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions, Mr. Mills? Officer Champion?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. From March 10th, 20, should be 2022 to March 10th, 2023, we had no instance listed for the location. Heat mile within a quarter mile. Times we had listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions, Officer Champion? Is the applicant here? If you are the applicant's representative, would please give your name and address?
Ken Acock, 1107 23rd Avenue.
Ahmed Awatasi, 12532 Willview Circle, North Port, Alabama.
Y'all may remember Mr. Alatas. He's owned several stores in the Tuscaloosa and North Port area. I was coming with Mr. Tyner beforehand. It's 20 years ago, about this time of year that I came first time for the city council with a much younger Mr. Alatas and his father.
I assume there was a much younger Acock version there as well?
Indeed.
And definitely much younger Tyner.
I wasn't gonna mention anything above that of Mr. Busby's going there.
I have a little more here.
Me too.
This, this is a transfer of an existing license and a location. If you haven't been by the store, it's an extremely clean, well-organized place worth taking a look at. It's a nice, nice operation.
Any questions?
When did you take over?
February 13th, February 14th. Yeah. February 13th to 14th.
February 13th of this year?
Yes, sir.
And your other locations in Tuscaloosa? Your other locations?
Christ Street, the Civic Center, North Port, the other store I have.
Okay, well, welcome to District Four.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Applications approved. Good luck. Clerk?
This approves an off-premises-only retail beer license at the Pilot Travel Center number 4555.
Fair motion?
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Mills?
Okay, Mayor and Council. This is ABC Alcohol Application 23-031 for a retail beer off-premise only by Pilot Travel Center LLC located at 3201 Baltimore Road. This is the map of the location. Second picture shows the street map of the proposed location. All my reports have been filed with city clerk office. Officer Champion, come give your report. Followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Officer Champion?
From, again, it should be March the 10th of 2022 to March 10th, 2023, we have no instance listed for the location. Heat mile within a quarter mile. Top times we had a. Top crimes we had listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions of Officer Champion? Thank you. Is the applicant here? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
How are y'all doing?
Good.
How are you?
Good, good. My name's Hunter Candela. I'm the, uh, region manager for the, uh, two Pilot Travel Center locations. First one here is, uh, three two oh one Buttermilk Road, Cottondale, Alabama.
Any questions? All right. So, this is a public hearing. Anyone here wish to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Approved. Clerk?
This approves an off-premises-only retail beer license at the Pilot Travel Center number seventy-six.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, Mr. Mills?
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is the same applicant as previously, where they're applying for, uh, ABC Alcohol Application twenty-three dash zero three two A for a retail beer off-premises only, twenty-three dash zero three two B for a retail table wine off-premises only, located at forty-four sixteen Scotland Boulevard. Again, this is the map location of the proposed applicant. Second picture shows the street, uh, map of the location. All of my reports are filed with the City Clerk Office. Officer Champion will come give this report, followed by any more questions for the applicant.
Officer Champion?
We have no incidents listed for the location. Heat map within a quarter mile. Top crimes we had listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions of Mr. Mills or Officer Champion? Thank you. The applicant's already, uh, been before the council, um, so no need to do that unless the council has any questions. Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Retail beer licenses, off-premises is approved, clerk?
This approves an off-premises-only retail table wine license at the Pilot Travel Center number seventy-six.
So moved.
Six.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
I'm sorry. This is, this is another one.
Yeah, we hadn't, it, it has been a long day. We hadn't had Wyatt Brothers Garage up here, right?
No, this is the all-premises-only.
Okay, the wine, sorry. I thought the next one's, yes, if we're there.
Yes.
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 All-premises-only retail table wine license approved. I didn't know if you were playing a Jedi mind trick on me or I lost track of myself.
That was, that's what showed up on screen.
That was it.
That showed up on the screen.
Clerk?
This approves a class-one lounge retail liquor license at Hopper's Corner Bar in Tuscaloosa.
Move adoption. Second.
Second.
Moved in second, Mr. Mills?
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application twenty-three dash zero three three for lounge retail liquor class one by the Wyatt Brothers Garage LLC, uh, DBA Hoppers Corner Bar located at five oh eight Red Drew Avenue. Uh, first picture shows a map of the location. Second picture shows the street view of the location. Um, all my reports have been filed with the City Clerk Office. Officer Champion will come give this report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Officer Champion?
We have no incidents listed for the location within the last year. Heat map within a quarter mile. Top crimes we had listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions of Officer Champion? Okay, uh, is the applicant or applicants here? You would, please come forward and give your name and address.
Uh, Nick Chichester, fifty-two fourteen Kasimi Avenue.
Any questions?
Yeah, Nick, we talked on the phone, right?
Yes, sir.
And, and Mike Musgrove had called me beforehand. Y'all are buying this lo-, you're buying this business from Mr. Musgrove, right?
Yes, sir.
And I think I asked you on the phone, but as you can see, I sometimes forget things. Are, are y'all buying the property or just the operating business?
Just the operating business.
Okay, so, uh, on the heat map, it, it only went back, uh, a year, and I think we did discuss is that, that location has a history.
Yes, sir.
That is the location that we shut down, uh, for first shooting, and before we could even deal with that, another assault. All of it on camera. Mr. Musgrove bought it, turned it into a nice little almost corner neighborhood pub, and I don't think we've had any problems out of there. That's what we're expecting to continue.
Yes, sir. We're keeping it operating just like it is, not changing the name, nothing.
And, and y'all have got the, um, uh, the storefront on the University Boulevard side that you're operating as well?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I, I can't say welcome to District Four because you're already here, uh, but I wish you success and look forward to smooth dealings.
Yes, sir.
Good luck. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here wishing to speak for or against? Seeing none, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Class-one lounge retail liquor license approved. Good luck. Clerk?
This approves a less than seven-day special events retail license at A-Day Game Day Events.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved in second, Mr. Mills?
Okay, Mayor and Council, this is ABC Alcohol Application twenty-three dash zero three four, located nine twenty Paul Bryan Drive, um, uh, Southern Food Service Management Incorporated for A-Day Game Day Events. This is the, uh, map of the location. Second picture shows the street view of where this proposal applicant is going to be located at. Uh, all my reports have been filed with the City Clerk Office. Officer Champion will come give this report, followed by the applicant to answer any questions you may have.
Officer Champion?
No incidents listed for the last year. Heat map within a quarter mile. Top crimes listed within that quarter mile.
Any questions? Is the applicant here? If you would, please come forward and give your name and address.
David Garrett, nine twenty Paul Bryan Drive.
Any questions, Mr. Garrett?
David, what's, um, tell us what the, uh, the event setup is for this?
Uh, it's for the zone areas, basically, for A-Day game.
And it's just for the zone?
Yes, sir.
So, that's, that's serviced separately out of that larger vending contract that does the stadium as a whole?
Yes, sir. We usually, we run the skyboxes in the club areas.
Okay.
And for A-Day instead of the, uh, club owners bringing in their own alcohol. They're trying to limit that, uh, offer the sale of it instead.
And y'all are out of where?
Excuse me?
You're, you're, are y'all headquartered here in Tuscaloosa?
We're in Birmingham is our, is our headquarters.
All right, well, that's all the, that's all the questions I have. I know everybody else is jealous of all the alcohol business.
I really am.
I don't have any other questions.
Voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 License is approved. Good luck. Clerk?
This concurs with the appointment of Jessica Junkin as Acting Municipal Court Administrator.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This approves job class specifications for two water and sewer jobs.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolutions, resolutions adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes a merchandise agreement with Fame and Martin Enterprises.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes submission of projects to Tuscaloosa's federal legislative delegation for fiscal year twenty-four community project funding consideration.
Move adoption. Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Tuscaloosa Civil Rights History and Reconciliation Foundation.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes execution of an assignment and amendment to the Dixie Air Services Incorporated Fixed Base Operator Agreement and Aviation Hangar and Ground Lease to PWMM LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This will authorize the disbursement from District One Improvements Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes the chief financial officer to draw drafts for the Downs Improvements Project Property acquisitions.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This will authorize a contract with Stivers Brothers Automotive of Alabama and declare a bid law exemption.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This tentatively awards a public works contract to ST Bun Construction Company Incorporated for the twenty-twenty-three citywide resurfacing project.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes a professional study and consult services agreement with McGifford and Associates LLC for the Tenth Avenue and Nineteenth Street Project.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This will authorize a professional study and consult services agreement with McGifford and Associates LLC for the Eastover Drainage Project.
Motion.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Rick's Service Company LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Druid Glass Construction Incorporated.
So moved.
I'm sorry.
So moved.
I think we have a motion.
Who's on first? What did we just do?
Voting Mr. Lanier.
Play the music in a minute.
Yes. Yes.
That would be an affirmative.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Dana's Painting Services for the Tuscaloosa Tourism Sports Interior Painting.
Motion.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Dana's Painting Services for the Harrison Taylor Incident Command Center.
Move adoption.
Second.
Been moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Clerk?
This authorizes Amendment Three to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three Water and Sewer Reserve for Future Improvements Fund Budget.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Resolution's adopted. Ordinances, resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation for introduction. Clerk?
This introduces zoning amendment number fifteen-ten.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
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 Clerk?
This amends Exhibits A and B of Section nineteen dash forty-two and nineteen dash sixty-A of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
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 Call for unanimous consent.
Second.
Moved in second, voting Mr. Lanier.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Exhibits are amended. Clerk?
This authorizes Amendment Ten to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-three General Fund Budget.
Motion.
Second.